Okay, it is Tuesday, December 29th, 2020. Call this an order. So you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and up.
Minutes are in order, 6:50. Commissioner, committee, liaison reports on coming meetings and events.
New Year's Eve, that's all I've got.
I got a head reading from the day. Are you all going to press conference tomorrow, Kristin?
No, we're going to do a press release.
Okay. And then Monday, we do a healthcare webinar at 8:00, that's all I got. Commission comments, hardnances? Yeah, hardnances. Uh, did the contract? Do we want to, we have BKD on?
Yes.
Let's go ahead with cares and then we'll go with the bucket for after that if that's okay. I assume that's, yeah. Okay.
Okay, Terry or Julian, I'll turn it over to you.
There you are. How are you doing? Oh, hold on one second. Here I am. Hope everybody had a great holiday. And so a couple of things we're going to talk about today, trisold up through the funding recommendation, as well as the public health and public safety that we talked about. And I believe Kristen and/or Debbie, we've also been talking through some of the internal spending. And then, one of the things I wanted to touch on is obviously the new guidance has come out. It's still all being digested and understood, and we'll have some kind of formal public publications regarding that. But as you may know, the extension in the CARES Act was through 1231 of 2021. However, that's at the discretion of the prime recipient, which would be in this case, the state. So we are awaiting the hearing from the state of Missouri. You know, they have been really following the OIG's guidance. So, you know, it would be a surprise if it's not extended somewhat, but I'm, you know, not sure that it would be extended all the way to 1231. So, you know, just wanted to let you all know that that is, you know, definitely out there as we think through the rest of these funding recommendations and kind of what the next steps are. In the, just a couple of other things, you know, as you, as I'm sure you know, the states and local governments were not included in the new act. However, there's quite a bit of funding out there for homelessness assistance, real assistance, some of those types of things. So we're still, you know, working through to find out like how that's going to work in terms of the past few recipients and where that's going to come from. So, you know, that might be something, you know, as you think through what your strategies are there. And then the last thing is obviously then, as it relates to vaccines and testing and some of those types of things. So those are kind of the highlights there, right? You know, there's PPE money, there's a lot of money out there, I believe, for school districts and that type of thing. So as soon as we get some kind of formal guidance on exactly what that means, we'll send that out. But at this point, that's what we know and just wanted to let you all know that that's kind of where we are. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. And then the only other thing I would mention is we still have, you know, I think we're doing okay on the hours. If for any reason things were to be extended, then obviously it's at your discretion, whether it's even to cheaper contract. But there's certainly ways either just on the same per hour basis that we're currently on, if there was anything, you know, just more of an added cost need. So just to let you know that we'll be, you know, we'll be here prepared to serve people anyway that's starting to be necessary. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa.
Okay. Well, first thing I wanted to do is Kristen sent me over the emergency funding for December, so in an effort to turn that around. Right now, we still are under the 1/6 deadline for reporting for December. State of Missouri, I don't, they haven't said if they've gotten an extension on that reporting date yet. So we're still hoping we get an extension on that, but in case we don't, just wanted to get these in front of you so that we could turn it around fairly quickly. So we have three items that are kind of a conglomerate, could be conglomerate of items. So D-10-10, so we've got some Zoom subscriptions for $15, a COVID test for $57, and then EMS had some PPE supplies, which was masks and coveralls and things like that. So this was just the emergency spending that was done in December that Kristen was kind of talking about, I think he did last time or the time before that, we were still going to run these emergency expenses through, as we have in the past.
I'm good.
Yep, I'm good.
We approve D-10-10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next thing I'm going to talk about is the allocation. So basically, we've gone through and looked and figured out exactly how much is going to get spent for each application, what they were awarded versus what they actually got spent. So there was a few near the end and some within, throughout the whole time, but mostly throughout the end that didn't get funded fully, so we had to bring that back into there. So if you look at that second page of the allocation, you'll see the commission approvals through 1222 of 6.9 million in that range. These December's expenses that you just approved for $38,000, which gives you a remaining allocation of 1.9, almost $2 million. I will say that St. Mary's has not sent me any additional information on expenses that they had here. So what I did is I put together every expense that could be documented and they gave me the proof of payment for, took what their total remaining allocation was, so they had about 347,000 left that they could spend, and then whatever I had in expenses, I said that that was allowable. And then what we have left over is 135,000 that we don't have any documentation or anything for. Again, I think it was some items that were on back order and things like that, that they didn't think they could get spent. With this extension, we possibly could have give that more time to get those items spent, depending on when that guidance comes down. But if you did just want to put that money back into the bucket of the internal expenses, you would have a total of $2.1 million there to spend. So with all that said, if we were going to go the route of using this money on payroll expenses, I've got a, just a small little spreadsheet there that shows the net payroll costs for the health, the EMS and the law enforcement. Then what we did is I took those total remaining allocations, one with the St. Mary's and one without, divvied up the payroll for the health department completely, and then after that, split it between EMS and law enforcement. That's something that we kind of talked about, that might be a way to go. Again, this is just suggestion of a way that you could do it. I know we also talked about carving out that EMS, those new employees for the EMS and giving that money specific to EMS to them. So again, this is just a suggestion of a possible way we could do it. Yeah, and then last thing on my list was just the internal spending, and Kristen might want to speak to this, but that number, the 1.9, 8 million, that doesn't include any internal spending off the applications that haven't been spent yet. So if one of those applications wasn't going to be spent, and I know Kristen was saying the EOC items might be that, in that category, that would increase based off those internal applications. So I don't know if Kristen wanted to jump in on that at all, if she's on.
So I talked to the sheriff in Sierra last week. They got the TVs and the actual hardware to do through the video conferencing, but they are not going to be able to get them installed. So I know that there is a portion of that application that will not be spent because they couldn't get them installed before the end of the year. I don't have an exact number yet. I'm working on that, but I don't have it with me. So I do know that that application itself is one that we are not going to spend the full 56,000, I think is what it was. I'm thinking it's going to be close to the like 22.
And again, this is one of those things that if that extension comes through, we could wait and let them get that all figured out and spent and everything like that. But kind of with the public health and safety payroll, if, when Kristen gets those final numbers, we could just put it together. Because what we're going to do, that money's already been spent, the public health and safety payroll. So when we do our reporting in December, that's where we'll report those expenditures. So if we get that guidance and the governor says that we do have an extension based off the OIG guidance, then we can just go ahead and wait for those additional things. If not, we can just go ahead and spend it all on those public health and safety employees.
So we just got an email from Missouri Association of Counties that says that the state of Missouri is only extending the date from Missouri counties that receive funds to use them on eligible expenses incurred before or on June 30th, 2021. In order to receive the extension on funds, counties will have to have their coronavirus relief fund spending reported to the state by January 31, 2021. Counties that receive an extension, increase the funds by until September 1, 2021 to return them to the funds. So I don't know if that gives some clarification there?
Yes.
I'm not sure if I changed my mind.
Okay.
On the virtual EOC, the only thing that we didn't take into account for was the mounting brackets for the TV, the 319. I did not purchase them because I did not have approval to purchase those. So I did buy one for here, but I still need to buy 10 more of those. It will still be under our budget, but I didn't want to do that unless you guys would say it was okay for me to go do it.
Well, I think we have to purchase them. It's kind of, well, I got, you know, I could take one home. I got a mount, and then I could, I could do it from home, but I think we better, we better purchase the mounts.
It's your pleasure if you want me to. They don't have them. We're going to have to order them, just like the TVs were ordered. But we can go and I can go ahead and put those on order today if you, if that's what you choose to do.
I'd like to get this money spent and close this out. So I'd like to apply it towards the payroll for the EMS employees and get it to the health department, try to get all this thing done and closed, but that's just, it's just me. So.
But you're not wanting to do the 50-50 split between what was left after?
I mean, you got 10 new EMS, EMS employees that you need to?
So take the healths out?
Right.
And then allocate the rest of it to EMS, which is going to have to be paid from somewhere. If that's what you're wanting to do?
No, it's, I mean, you can drag it on forever if you want.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but, you know, I mean, obviously there'll be money in those funds that you can spend on television or mounts or whatever, but.
Well, I think you want permission to order the mounts, right?
Well, we need to for those other 10 entities.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And it's already been in the application that wasn't approved, right?
The TVs were, the virtual EOC program was, was approved. I did not put in a mounting bracket. Those were not in there. But we're still, we're still under because I know that JCPD, EOC, myself and health department, all three of us dropped out of this virtual EOC program, which allowed more money to be spent elsewhere. So we're still going to come well under the proposed budget.
So then you can just go ahead and order those?
If that's the pleasure of the commission, I'll be happy to do that for you today.
I'm fine with that part. That was allocated towards that stuff, so if you backed out, you don't need it, then use that money for brackets and the rest goes back into KID. But like what Chris was saying was closing out, have it done, take the money to health department. And then the rest will go to the EMS as far as salaries or payroll, whatever you want to call it.
I don't know about the.
Guys, there's going to be some internal applications that are still outstanding besides the EOC. It would be nice to wait until some of those are paid to reallocate if there's money unspent out of those into payroll.
The Missouri Association of Counties are saying until the end of January now?
June.
It looks like the end of June, and we'll be reporting by, to the state by January 31st. So I don't know if that's going to be just basically what we're, what the plan is for spending those funds.
And I guess at any time next year, the commission could decide to go with the payroll and then close it out come January 20th, once we know all the internal applications are completed? Is that still an option?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what, what I was thinking we would do, was get through all those internal applications, make sure those are all going to get spent and items received and things like that, and then we can put the rest towards payroll. And the other question again is the St. Mary's, if we're going to give them more time to get their overhead spent?
I think I would rather do that than allocate the money and then all of a sudden we've got more internal and it's like, so I know where you're coming from, Chris, but.
Well, but I mean, have you heard that from the governor? So.
I've talked to the treasurer. The treasurer is the one that, that gave out the money. And after our meeting last week, I talked to him and he was, he knew as much as we knew. So I haven't heard anything back from him, but.
Just cutting it down to the skin of your teeth and, I mean, you don't get it spent by the 31st and all of a sudden they don't give you an extension and now, now what are you going to do? Now you're going to get, you're going to get $2.1 million back?
Sure, no. I mean, what we would do is we would use it all for the public health and safety. So I don't know if you would want to pass something that said it to that effect, that, you know, everything will go through our applications, any internal applications we would spend as they were already set out to be spent. And then if there's any that aren't going to get spent in time, now not in time for that December 30 deadline, if we're not, we don't get good enough guidance for you guys, I'm not sure exactly what we want to hear, if we want to hear directly from Missouri. And then we would spend the rest on the public health and safety. Like I said, that reporting period would be for January 6th, so we would have basically until then to hear something before we'd have to say, okay, it's all on public health and safety.
Yeah, I think we could certainly, you know, extend it to that date and then still use the methodology that you laid out, Chris, with the public health and public safety, which would still give us time to give emergency button up anyway.
And you're saying January 6th, right?
So the reporting for the December expenses is, right now it's January 6th. I've talked to the Missouri team, the BKD Missouri team, and they think that Missouri's going to get an extension on that, but it hasn't happened yet. So we're still working within that January 6 deadline at this point. Now, if we get an extension on that, obviously we'll have more time to report those public health and safety closeout expenses.
Isn't January 6th the reporting deadline?
Correct. So you've already spent the public health and safety expenses. It's just a matter of reporting what expenses you're going to use.
But we haven't, we haven't approved that, right?
No.
So basically approving that to be paid, can that happen after December 31st?
December 30th, which is tomorrow.
Yeah. Sorry, 30th. Or you're saying go ahead and approve it today with that clause in there?
That's what I was thinking, is that you would go ahead and approve it pending, you know, these remaining items to be spent.
The full 2.134, that includes the money from St. Mary's?
Correct.
And then if they end up being able to spend it, allocate it, then we just pull that back out of there. And then we reallocate where the money went on our own between health, EMS.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So are we going to do an even 50-50 split on EMS and, and the sheriff? Or are we going to cover the full cost of the 10 employees that we were bringing on and then do the remaining portion into the law enforcement? Because that's, I mean, I don't have a problem doing the full amount for health, but I would like to see the full amount of the 10 employees be covered for EMS. And then if there's remaining funds, that would go into law enforcement. And it seemed like it was 800,000 plus or something.
The amount we had plugged in the budget that we needed to balance EMS with a bit of weight was set up to 747,000, $66.
So it was about?
746,000, $66. May I trust you?
747,000, $66.
And that included benefits?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to.
I mean, that's.
Cover that.
Well, I mean, it's, we're talking about $3,000 difference or something.
Yeah, which is not.
And you have to do the St. Mary's part or not, and it's pretty close.
Well, either way, I would like to see us cover that cost.
Look, if you wanted to cover that cost and then carve out those two things, so you could carve out the health department and then carve out the 747, that would, if we base it off the 1.9 to 2 million dollars, not the St. Mary's money?
Right.
You'd have left over 605,000, and you could split that two ways if you wanted to do it that way, or however you want to do it. That would be a 302,000 split between EMS and sheriff.
What do you guys think?
I'm good either way on the remaining, I mean, if we want to.
Just take care of the health and put the rest in the EMS. John said he really didn't want it in law enforcement, so I think we can work with it in EMS.
It's a restricted fund, though.
Yeah, I'd rather put it where it can be used. Somewhere down the road, too, when we start vaccinations and, and things like that, that's.
That's not for, this isn't for that, though. This is for what we spent on now, until tomorrow. So. What do you want to do with the rest of it, then? You want to put some of it in law enforcement? Is that what you want to do?
Something that's, that's not restricted, so that if.
Law enforcement funds are restricted, too. Not restricted also, also.
Or we can do the 646 for health, 747 or whatever and some change for EMS 10 employees, leave the rest in there until we have to start divvying up where it goes and we find out what's requested for in the public health and safety.
Well, but tomorrow's the deadline and so we got to figure out where it's going to go if, if we don't get an extension.
But we've got it in public health and safety, which opens it up to anything, right? So.
Well, but we have to dedicate where the money's going, right?
So the 646 for health and the 747 for EMS and whatever's left, just put it in public health and safety.
If you're reimbursing a fund or the other, there's no public health or safety unless you keep your.
I guess I'm not understanding how we would leave it in public health and safety and not allocate it to any of them, then.
Well, I already talked about leaving it in the cares money and taking the chance that the governor is going to approve it to be spent until June. Is that what you're thinking? Or I don't know what public health and safety you're talking about.
Same one they've been talking about the whole time, which I'm assuming was their plot, that on January 6th, we can say, okay, we decided we used it here and here and here.
So where's, is all PPE being funded out of EMS, then?
Majority of it is. I think the sheriff has bought some of their own.
Yes.
They've also gotten some of their own.
We had to buy some specialized ones, so if we use them in jail, they don't have the metal piece across the nose.
We bought some of our own, too. And we definitely bought some up here, too, to have for other departments. But we funneled it through the cares to get reimbursed.
Right. But that fund could be used to buy PPE EMS?
Yes.
So if we put more money into EMS, they could buy their PPE through that fund?
Yes. And then distribute it to other departments, I guess.
Right. I mean, with the cost of PPE going up and everything else, you're going to obviously expend more money as you go forward over the next five or six months. And so maybe, I mean, the cost of the employees is 747, so maybe you put more into EMS to cover some of those PPE costs. I mean, you may get another round of funding, you may not.
Yeah.
But at least you have some money in there to, you know, even though it's restricted, you can still buy PPE.
It's restricted, but it's controlled by us.
True.
So we got, we can decide on that, where, you know, John, we got to be nice to him if we want to give him some money and use it for something else. So I don't know if I can afford that much pie.
A lot of pie.
I know. But along lines with what you're saying, if it goes into EMS, we can use it for PPE and it's, that's where it's coming from, a central source.
Right, right.
So you could do 850,000 to EMS, that's basically a little over another 100,000 for EMS and then do the balance to the health?
Well, I don't think you can. That would be ideal, but only 646 is reimbursable, right?
At this point, that's what you're asking. It's similar to St. Mary's, they go to.
I was thinking more like a million into EMS and 646 into health and remainder into law enforcement, you know, just as a contingency plan. Obviously, if they get an extension, you could leave some of that in that cares fund.
So did we figure out, did we, can we put it in a public health and safety line? So did we figure out, did we, can we put it in a public health and safety line? And we have until January to say exactly where it went? Or do we have to deviate up today?
Teresa, I'm going to let you answer that as far as, I know the 30th is the deadline. Governor hasn't declared anything yet, but you say you got to the 6th, so...
So the 30th is the deadline to spend, and then the 6th is when we're supposed to report. So we have until the 6th, basically to say exactly what we are going to use the funds on. So technically, you could have until Tuesday meeting the 5th to say for sure exactly if we don't get that extension, that you wanted to go, you know, 646 to health department, million to EMS and the remainder to law enforcement, or however you want to deviate up, you could wait until the 5th, that is true.
And you're saying because we already spent those salary monies?
Correct.
That will entitle us to wait till the 5th, basically?
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, Julie, you might speak to this, if you need to have a motion before the 30th to say that you're going to use it?
Yeah, I, I think to be prudent, we should probably act on what we know. And if, you know, anything changes by next Tuesday, I mean, even though we plan to utilize the public health and public safety, as Teresa's mentioned, it's been spent. So it's really just a matter of getting it reported. If for some reason those, you know, those rules get relaxed, then I think you could, you could make a different motion next Tuesday, but I would go ahead to be prudent based on what you know today.
Are we meeting Tuesday or Thursday?
There's a meeting there, so you guys, whether you want to keep that or not, because that's really on.
Well, we could, we could, we could do it just for cares on Tuesday if we want, which would...
Julie, does the motion have to be specific, though? Can they, can they vote to use it on payroll for public health and safety and leave it generic that they're going to use the whole amount? Do they have to specify at this point which funds they're going to pay back?
Yeah, I don't think they need to specify which funds. I think, you know, we know, you know, the departments and then, you know, for us, we're going to just be reporting this to health and safety and then kind of how you all allocate that going forward would be up to you.
So Julie, give me an idea of a motion that you can make right now.
So they'll have to, you'll have to meet on Tuesday, then? And you'll have to decide, you know, how you're going to deviate up.
So why don't we just go ahead and do the health part, do the EMS part and leave whatever's remaining in there, and that's all we got to mess with when we come back on Tuesday. So we got the 646 and some change for, for health. We got the 747 or whatever it is for the extra EMS that we approved.
Okay.
And then just, then we just have the rest of it sitting there. So if something happens and you lose out, that's the only stuff we have hanging out there. Because I'm like, yeah, let's get it allocated.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't even want to give $10 back to the, to the treasurer because...
So you want to put, I'm fine with that, 646 into health, 747 into EMS, and the remainder to be spent to public health and safety reimbursement?
Yeah, that's where I was going with that a while ago.
Will that work?
Yeah, my only question is, are we allowing St. Mary's to, an extension of time?
I'd just leave that in there for them, and if they get it to us by, I guess, January 6th, they have to report that they spent it by December 30th, right? Is that going to cause a bunch of headaches, but...
Depending on the extension. So if they don't, if we don't get the extension, then all the stuff that I already have, that's already been spent and things like that, that's the, that's the spent money.
2.13.
May I really feel like we need to know, unless we get an extension to come out Tuesday, then we really need to, I think by Tuesday be, you know, be finished and done in order to get everything filled and reported by the 6th. Because that's going to take a little bit of time to get all that pulled together.
So basically, we give St. Mary's till next Tuesday, and after that, then it's lost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just go to public health and safety.
Yeah.
Well, probably till next Monday.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe till, maybe till December 31st at 12:59 PM. To close out the stuff. 11:59 PM.
I would prefer, I, I would prefer that you do not give St. Mary's an extension of time unless we receive one.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's why I'm saying if we, they, they have to have spent that or, you know...
Just tomorrow.
In our, yeah, in our timeframe.
I mean, everybody had to, what, the 15th or something to get the stuff back? So, I mean, they're out of time.
Yeah.
I mean, their, their deadline's done past. And everybody else was...
They actually asked for an extension. I think they basically said we're not going to be able to spend it, right?
Teresa, that was what you said, they really didn't have any time to get it.
Yeah, they, right. So that last application is kind of the one that's kind of hanging out there, that, those items that they have requested, they're either having issues getting them or they just haven't purchased them.
Well, can we contact them? No, I mean, tomorrow's it.
Do you have a time? Did you say, I don't know, Kristen, if that was your Debbie, that you recommended some of them to them?
I mean, end of business here is 4:30.
4, by the end of business tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, so what am I going to do, the extension?
We're just giving them, the deadline is tomorrow at 4:30.
Which is, which is the deadline right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't have an extension right now, past tomorrow either.
Okay.
So it...
So they will know something by tomorrow, because it's Thursday and Monday to get stuff ready for Tuesday, come in and...
But you can still, Julie, go ahead and approve the 646 and the 770, or 747 today.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And the remaining going health and safety.
And the remaining will just stay in the cares until Tuesday, and then, then we can also add to that to pay out or to close that out if we wish.
Yeah, you'll want something right now that says that you'll use it on public health and safety.
Okay, there you go.
We got the bump outs for EMS, too, that wasn't paid for yet.
Well, if we have a purchase order or something like that on it and it's already been approved, that's already accounted for.
But it wasn't, it wasn't in before our internal application, so it didn't go through that same process. So what do we need to do with that stuff, too? Because that's, it's not necessarily payroll, but that was directly COVID-related stuff.
You'll definitely have to address that stuff and make sure the budget, your own budget of this fund, we should want to do with this.
That's where you could put additional funds into EMS right now to cover some of that. I mean, we know what those costs are, also cover some of that PPE. So, I mean, if you wanted to do 850, like Sam said, to cover the bump out and some PPE, I mean...
Or 850 or 900,000, and then I would say probably 900,000.
I'm putting it all in there right now if you want to and be done with it, but we can leave the other stuff hanging to find out what happens with St. Mary's stuff and if we have anything else that comes along that we, you know, in the last, next three days or whatever, so.
In my opinion, St. Mary's is out of time.
I, I think they have till tomorrow.
The way it sounded, they're not going to be asking for it anyway.
Everybody else had till the 15th.
Well, or the 19th.
Whatever, but...
We had a couple of...
I mean, so there were sub- or super- agreements that needed to be signed and all that stuff needed to be done, so.
I would do for, for EMS, either 850 or 900,000. That way, we've got money for all this other stuff and, and then the 6 for the health, for the...
So what number do you want to do for EMS?
Either 850 or 900,000.
Today's your day, you pick. The 900?
Yeah.
875? Do I already?
Okay.
I'm going to give you 890 early.
Yeah, you should have started with that. All right, I move that we expend the remaining public, or remaining cares funding on public health and safety salaries with 646,000 going to health and 900,000 going to EMS.
Second?
All in favor?
All right. Good enough?
Is that good enough, ladies?
You want the remainder? The remainder to be spent on public health and safety, but what fund to be determined?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Are you asking if we, what fund?
Are you suggesting adding that, too?
Yeah.
Okay, so the remainder?
To be determined.
There you go. Okay, so amended the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Sounds like you're trying to get rid of us.
No, we're just, I just wanted to be sure if there was any that you...
Hey, I do want to talk to Teresa for a second on that one application that, for one of the private schools that we talked about. And one of the private school's application was for a couple of different things that they wanted. They just changed their mind, they would like a tinting of the windows because the, the reading of the temperature isn't working so good because of all the sunlight coming in. So the money is still going to remain the same, it's just that they're going to buy something different that was originally in the application. And Terry was suggesting we bring that back to you back to first, make sure you didn't have a problem with that. Is that right, Terry? Teresa, I'm sorry, Teresa.
Oh, I was like, is somebody else in the room? Sorry.
I'm looking at your name.
I, I guess my question was, so if they bought the thermometers they're going to use, because I, that was part of the application, was those thermometers, those big ones that they were going to use. So if they already know that they're not working, have they purchased them already?
They purchased, I think, one in the first go around.
They sent in one application that had the cameras on it already. So some are installed, and then the application now is for an additional cameras and then some other things on there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it's needed to make the item work for this purpose, I think that would be fine. That's a public health and safety kind of...
What's the amount?
So I, I don't think eligibility is the question, Julie.
No, I agree, I agree.
As long as they stay within the amount that was approved, then you guys are okay. I don't, Teresa, do you know what the amount was on that second application, the one that we're talking about?
The total?
Yeah.
I think it was 1366, I want to say?
13,000.
13,066.
And they had other stuff in there, but they're just trying to do it out.
So we've already approved it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just want to make sure you don't have any problems with that.
13,066, 14.
I'm fine.
Now, Teresa, that money has not been spent yet. Because we're purchasing it internally within. Are we going to go out and request that to be installed today? Because we know we're not going to get it before the end of year.
Exactly. So, yeah, I mean, again, extension intending, but, yeah, those items would need to be installed today or tomorrow.
Not just a per, not just a... Not just a purchase order for the intend to?
No, with something like, if, if they had time to do this and they're just now doing it here, it's not a COVID really related delay, I would think. Julie, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I agree. I think if they had ordered it and then because of COVID, there was a delay, but if, you know, if they, if they waited to make that decision, then they're going to have to bear that responsibility of getting that in service by the 31st.
30th?
Sorry, 30th.
Yeah, the only bad thing is the timing and we're doing the purchasing for and that type of stuff, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's what, that's the problem with the private schools.
So I mean, if they, if they have somebody that can come in and put it in tomorrow, then I've got no problem, but, yeah, you got to be careful there.
But the other stuff that they would have bought instead of this, that's still an option for them?
Right.
You have bottle filling stations and water fountain locks, covers.
Okay. Okay, we'll contact the school and find out, then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, ladies.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good year.
See you next year.
He's going to turn the lights on for you.
God, it's... We're having fun now. Okay, we're going to keep jumping around, and we will do discussion of bucket group COVID campaign.
Go ahead. So we were just going to give like an update on the bucket media campaign that we had started. We met with them for the second time last Tuesday, and then I think Kristi forwarded the ideas that they had onto you guys. Did you guys have a chance to look at them? Do you have any feedback about it?
Time's still a no.
So do you want me to share some of the concerns that were shared on the call with them? So one of the representatives from CAP region shared that she was a little bit worried about the timing. You know, right now, we're still focusing on the preventative message, but a lot of it was really, now the message seems to be focusing on vaccine and, and educating people about the vaccine. And we found out on Tuesday that the videos and the campaign that they have won't come out until late February, and by that time, we're going to probably be hardcore into vaccines.
And I think at the time, you know, the, that the proposal was made to us, we thought it was going to be done quickly, and it was going to be just something that Jen could take and adapt very quickly. Because, you know, with our press briefings, we focus on the message of the week. This week, we're talking about this. So for us to plan for a, a commercial that's not going to be done until the end of February is a little concerning to us. And like I said, the, the message during this whole pandemic has changed so rapidly. You know, we feel like, like Jen said, by late February, it'll be hardcore vaccine. And it does seem like, just lately, I don't watch very much television, especially not network television, but it does seem like lately there's a lot more commercials talking about COVID and what to do, whether it's vaccine or preventative measures. So, you know, that was some of the concerns that were shared Tuesday, so we wanted to bring those to you. Is there anything else that you wanted to share, Jen?
Um, even if we had them switch gears to the vaccine, Missouri DHSS is already working on a campaign for vaccine concentrated education, so we could use that for free to educate about vaccines and push that to the public.
And we really don't even know how the vaccinations for the public is going, is going to, how it's going to look or how, you know, right now, they're saying, well, CVS and Walgreens are going to do the nursing homes. And, you know, when it comes time to do the public...
We keep asking, everyone keeps asking. The local public health agencies keep asking if they're going to be solely responsible, because a lot of them are still trying to contact Trace. You know, I'm, I'm so glad that we implemented our new strategy when we did, because now our staff can focus on, on getting ready for vaccines. But we keep asking, and DHSS right now doesn't have a lot of answers for us. You know, we anticipate that it'll be sort of like the flu vaccine, where Target will have it, Hivie will have it, doctors' offices will have it. But because of the storage restrictions with having to have it frozen, the Pfizer is the negative 70 ultracold, which we don't have the storage for that, we'll have the Moderna. But, and then the second dose, you know, calling all the people back and making... But, and then the second dose, you know, calling all the people back and making sure, because the window for that second dose is very tight. So there's just a lot of what ifs with the vaccine. So, you know, we do need to focus our efforts on that, but like Jen said, we don't know what rollout for the public's gonna be.
Yeah. That, to me, is gonna be more people are gonna be more interested in that than this. Because if this doesn't come out till the end of February, kind of like the boxes, those are gonna be out the first part of December.
I know.
And so they're saying the end of February, we could go into March and this whole this whole scenario could be obsolete. I mean, I was talking to Cameron Schulte over at Tulsa, and I said, are you gonna you know, get the vaccines and give shots, because they're doing the
Antigen testing.
COVID testing right now. And he said, oh yeah, I'm sure we will, they just don't know yet. So like, you know, as you said, we're gonna have a lot of the different drugstores who are gonna be doing the vaccines as well, so.
Anyway, we just wanted to bring you an update and see if you had feedback or concerns or
Pull it, stop it, be done, it's a waste of money.
Let's rhyme it too, cancel it.
I don't know that we need to reimburse them for some of the work they've done already. I don't know if we had a contract with them or what, but if this message isn't going out to the end of February, we have no control of whatever phase we'll be in at that point, so.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, at this time, we, we stop it and, you know, what, I'm sure they've got they've devoted a lot of time, so we're gonna have to reimburse them for some of it, but I, I, I'm thinking by the end of February, it's gonna be completely different.
Well, the timeline in agreement, all of this should have been done by now. So what they put in their proposal isn't even what's occurring.
Well, if they didn't perform, then we don't owe them any money. But if they did do some of the work and we agreed to it, and now we're saying, look, things have changed, we're pulling the plug, then we probably owe them something. I don't know, if, take a look at the contract and see what you
We'll work with you along that.
They have to give us a list of what they did and the hours spent.
Yeah.
So you mentioned the boxes, I'd pull the plug on them too. I don't care if we're getting the boxes up, we'll take them down and put them at the the food bank and people that want them can come get them rather than spending, what was it, seven dollars a box to ship out?
More than that.
Hell, save that money. I don't need them. Mine was gonna go to the local church or school anyway. So most everybody I know don't need them, so.
Oh, I've been getting lots of emails on when are they, when are they going to get them, so.
They had production delays.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could just we could look at different ways to give them out. I mean, you could take them, you know, every, every one of our communities has churches, you could have have the churches give them out or something, but I
Oh, it's just an idea.
Yeah.
What, do we have three hundred thousand boxes at seven bucks a box?
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand, okay, well, thirty-three thousand times seven bucks a pop, there's
Nope, they'll fit in the back of your truck, I'm sure of it.
I can't even fit all of my finding in the parking lots right now in back of my truck. They're laying everywhere. So we're gonna, even when this is over with, we're gonna be reminded of it.
Go get the eggnog.
I got, I, I have something, George Washington's eggnog, we're, we're gonna sample a little later here, but let's, let's finish, let's finish with Bucket first.
I move that we terminate the contract with Bucket Media.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we'll just, whatever expenses they have incurred, we'll
So who you want to do with the boxes? Are you brushing me off?
No, I'm just, we're, we're in the middle of something and then we kind of, you want some eggnog?
No. I'm just saying, we can save some money on these boxes that were supposed to be out
We've probably already given them a purchase order though, Emily.
I don't, did we give them a purchase order? Yeah.
For who, the post office?
No.
No.
The Bucket, or the, not Bucket, the
The boxes?
Yeah, MoMed.
I'm fine, but if we get the boxes, then take them and you can give them to the churches and schools.
But I think the purchase order included the postage. I don't know if that matters, but.
So you're saying just have them ship, ship a big
I guess the pallets will figure out how to disperse them.
I'll check on it, I don't know if that's an option.
They might even do better, just go pick them up in St. Louis.
I know they were assembling them.
A lot of boxes.
It's just a lot of boxes.
Yeah.
Lots?
I was telling Jeff he could get them in his truck.
In the jail. Yeah, yeah.
Sixteen for
Okay, well, check on that and let us know, let us know where we are, but
I don't know, a thousand boxes on a pallet, I mean, think about that. They're small boxes, but there'd be a lot of pallets.
Can they get a thousand on one pallet?
I don't know. It's probably only one very big box, but
No.
I'm just saying that there's not that many people, but I know that one.
Well, we will have
So it's not gonna break my heart if
LB needs a bunch.
I disagree. I've had enough people, I even had some people from Osage County wanting to know if, if they could buy them from us, so we could have a black market.
If they're good enough mass, we could just let, give them out to
They're medical grade.
Well, so we could give them to the hospitals, we could give them to EMS, we could give them to fire departments, everybody else.
I don't want to, I'm gonna throw away some.
Let Christie check on
Yeah, we'll let her check on. Okay, we're gonna keep moving on, we're gonna go back to bid award of twenty twenty dash thirty-five medical grade oxygen. We're reeling you guys in.
I'd just like to know something before they ship them. So if we, we can decide if we're actually gonna pay to ship them.
Thank you, ma'am.
So are they shipping them straight off of the truck from St. Louis, or are they bringing them here and then we gotta ship them from the post office?
I have no idea.
Christie, you know how they're doing that?
Okay.
Me? Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have the bid award for twenty twenty dash thirty-five medical grade oxygen for EMS. We had one vendor put in an RFP and it was air gas. EMS is good with it, and we've used them in the past.
We're very happy with the service they provide.
I move that we award the air gas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if I can just take a moment under new business, I just want to introduce our new medical director, just to everyone, so
Yes. Yes.
This is Dr. Stilly, he's the head of the emergency medical services stuff over at University of Missouri. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him, and if you guys had any quick questions for him or anything like that, so Dr. Ludi, you'll be retiring at the end of the year, so.
We've already met, but Jeff, Jeff might wanna
Thank you, appreciate it.
Get some
It's a good meeting to bring it to.
Yeah.
Stick around, it gets better.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down.
Yep.
Kind of anticlimactic, wasn't it? Do we have any unfinished business?
Can I ask about the onset, we saw our orders that we brought up last week, and their unfinished business. Did Jeff, did you get any comments back?
No, I meant to email y'all about that too, and see if you had a version of it that you could send me with this strikeout part in it, but
We can do that. Okay, do you want us to do that? Joe just wanted me to ask today where we were in the process.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to him about the countertop there too.
Okay.
You gotta quit talking to people about security stuff, it costs us money, Sheriff.
I'm not even, I've just started a security survey, I'm not even getting to spending money yet. But it's coming.
So
Well, then some of this money needs to be earmarked.
It does, because when we do the vaccine clinics, we're gonna have to up our security a little bit, because people are gonna be hard to deal with, I anticipate.
Don't go, I'll get with them on both of those things.
Do what?
Don't go, I'll get with them on both of those.
Okay, thank you.
So we're taking that countertop out, Sheriff's budget, so I just wanted to tell them first before we
Okay. Accounts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending reviews.
Summit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second final reading of budget adjustment number twenty-three. Okay, well, we'll move that back.
Come back to it.
And come back to it.
Would you put it off a week?
No, we're not.
Two weeks?
I cannot
Yeah. Michelle, can you have somebody in the clerk's office look for it?
Okay, well, we'll come back to that. Signing of DEA power of attorney letter.
I'm handling this for Matt. We had one of these with Dr. Ludi. What it is, is you're authorizing Dr. Stilly to purchase controlled medications on our batch. So same, you signed there and then you dated down there. Dr. Stilly signed it, and Matt Bryant witnessed that.
Okay. I move that we sign the power of attorney for DEA forms two twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess, sign their surplus title, but I guess Debbie doesn't so well. Discussion of liquidated damages for GBH on courthouse landscape.
Eric stepped down.
We had a letter Patrick
Kramer.
Kramer, yeah. Anyway, it's, their recommendation was that we, there's twenty thousand
Did you forward that to us or did you email that to us?
I, I sent it to you last week. And then it had GBH had
Got it.
Yeah. So I think they were talking about weather conditions and, but I have some problems with that, because there were some really good days when nobody was working over there. I, we had allowed, what, five days for weather?
So did, did they know we were gonna have this on the agenda today? Come up here and talk about it with them and Taylor?
I had let Patrick Kramer know. This was December twenty-second.
But did the contractor know?
I don't know. I don't know, Patrick. Now, we can, we can table it till next week, it doesn't matter, I just, we need to, we need to close this out as well, so
I think we got a letter from the contractor, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. That was accompanying Patrick's A weather day allowance indicates the contractor is to incorporate a designated number of days into the project's schedule. Only bad weather days in excess of that allowance are to be recorded and added to the contract completion. The contract for this project did not contain a weather day allowance, and it did, it had five days in it. Therefore, our understanding is such that
So the contract did have weather days in it?
Yeah, there was five days, didn't it?
It was in the bid, but
Oh, okay. Okay. But he's you know, going back to October, October, November, December, he's got eight days in October, nine days in November, three days in December, four days in January. We had some really good really good weather that nobody was working, so then he said, in addition, we uncovered an underground tunnel near the monument location. This was unforeseeable condition, costing us five working days. The time we stopped I, when we found that, I thought they had backfilled that and collapsed it the same day, so I don't know. I mean, we can, we can have them come back up next Thursday. But I, I just, I know there were a lot of good days when nobody was working out there, because
I'm fine with moving ahead with Patrick's recommendation, and if they have problems with the liquidated damages, then they can come and request some kind of changes or come argue it. I just we were gonna talk about it, should have had all the involved parties at the table. But, I mean, we do have his email.
Yeah.
I don't have the contract in front of me, I can't tell if we had a weather day built in there.
So it's just in the bid.
That's somewhere I have to make sure we include in from here on out, because that should have been in there. So.
Well, Patrick, or Central Missouri Professional, per the contract documents, liquidated damages were to be assessed at seven hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day, which would total twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Please review and let me know how you would like to proceed. I believe GBH has one final pay application yet to submit. At this point, we just need to know how the commission wants to proceed on the liquidated damages, so that the pay application can be adjusted accordingly.
Fine, we'll move ahead with it. If they got a problem with it, then they can request us to, I know we got the email, but Patrick reviewed it. Said there were still plenty of days in there, so.
Yeah.
We want to get it done.
You want to make the motion?
I'm sorry, did you guys get a checkoff list that everything was completed on this list? The lesson I have is the list of stuff that you
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have that? Can you pass that to me, somebody, so when you get, so I have it in the folder that these things got done.
You do have an email saying that Patrick is signing off on it being completed, then?
Yeah, I don't know if I have it, but I'll nothing else, I'll have Patrick send it over to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
So I can make that, whatever last payment you want.
So now do you want to do the motion on that? So have they submitted their final payment request?
No. As of right now, I have about fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eleven cents still outstanding. But then again, I've got that letter that says the twenty thousand two fifty, and I was just gonna subtract that off the last payment, whatever you guys want to. Make a motion to be a lot cleaner.
Make a motion of
To tell me whether you're going to do the full day payment.
Okay, so. We just need it that we're going to assess liquidated damages for the twenty-seven days at seven fifty per day?
Yeah.
Just that simple? Okay. Make a motion that we assess liquidated damages for twenty-seven days at seven hundred and fifty per day, total of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
Aye.
Okay. And I was looking for did we get the second reading? Okay. Second, second and final reading of budget adjustment. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number 23.
So it's 24, so, sorry, it was dated, it was wrong. It is number 24, or it was read as 24. It's for $14,437.50. This is the remainder of the law enforcement purpose. So, I do need action today.
I move that we sign quarter order number 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, signing the surplus title?
And, can't find the surplus title, so I'm just going to have to apply for a lost title. Okay, I'll do that, but I'll figure it out.
Okay. Okay.
Whose was it?
It was a vehicle, let's see.
One of the damaged?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it was the health department's one. I got the final one, I got totaled.
The escape?
Yeah.
So y'all don't have it?
Well, all the titles usually come up here. And it was a sheriff's vehicle at one time.
No, it was Explorer.
It was Explorer. It was a sheriff's vehicle.
Yeah, that was theirs.
Oh, so it's the sheriff's fault?
But you don't have the titles?
No, the titles come here.
We usually keep the titles. But we can apply for that.
Oh, it's the recorder's fault? Oh, okay.
Yeah, let me know after this, I'll get with you. It's real, it's pretty easy.
Okay.
Why wouldn't it be in with all the other ones?
It's been, it's a 2000-
It's old.
So why would it have come out of there? Why would it not be in there?
It could be in one of the other files, it could be out there. It costs 10 bucks to be in, it's not a big deal. Wow, that's good for you, that's bad, man.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just saying, how many other titles do we have floating around that we don't have?
I'm sure we got lots and lots of titles, so.
They should all be together, then.
Well, they should. Okay. Approval of revisions to gravel road upgrade policy. Eric's been so patient.
He must not bid enough to get to the top of the line.
It's too slow and get it on the agenda. Before you is a lot of work put into upgrading our gravel road policy for upgrading to paved road. Going into the next sales tax, we knew we wanted to upgrade this policy. The primary reason is the minimum threshold for traffic of 125 cars a day, we did not meet that. So we knew going into the future, we need to do some changing of this. And then, so we brought it to our road and bridge advisory committee. It's been several meetings, probably even going back a few years. Really hit it hard this year and got a lot of input from them. I sent you all the summary of the things that we changed. We're primarily going from a, more or less a petition base to not only petition base, but also by request of the public works department for roads that we felt or feel that need to be upgraded and also allow the financial participation by the county residents. I can go through in depth, or if you have certain questions, I can answer that. But some key things we looked at was lowering the minimum vehicular volume to 100 cars a day. Added something on a no outlet road of a minimum of 175 cars a day, stating that no pavement, no road would be upgraded to asphalt unless it connected to paved, connected to paved roads. In the past, we'd done some roads that just ended in gravel or hit another gravel road intersection. That doesn't do well for connectivity, which is a big item we looked at as well in this. Added, in our priority, our priority index equation for ranking roads, added some extra ability for a road that may not have the traffic, but has a good connection to two-state roads, primarily looking at connecting parts of the county that, for emergency access and just getting better connectability and more underserved parts of the county that didn't have paved road access and for sheriff and EMS and just in general. It's good for overall, the overall county for connectability. That, that was a big deal for us as we, as we looked at this. So, we got the revised manual or the policy here and it basically updates the one that was in place since 2001, which goes back a long time. Back in 2001, we were doing upwards of 30, 40 miles, maybe even 50 miles in a five-year period of upgrading. We really just kind of hit, hit all the really heavily traveled roads and now we're down to the lower volume that need to look at, connectability items. And not so much just because a road hits 100 cars or 125 cars a day, it automatically qualifies. And so we had, we added that provision in there where public works department through the road and bridge advisory board could recommend certain roads to upgrade to asphalt because they made sense for the county as a whole. So, I think that's really all I have. Is there any questions that you have in looking at it? I will acknowledge that Chris was a vital part of this, this committee. He's been on the advisory board for his eight, this particular advisory board for his eight years and was a big proponent of getting this upgraded, or updated, this manual updated, so.
There was lots of discussion over a lot of different things and so, obviously, you know, how far are we going to road, a road grader to go maintain a road? I mean, so, there's a lot more in, involved than just what is the minimum cars per day that, you know, you know, really looking at connectivity to be able to get emergency vehicles and fire and those people to, to the majority of residents. So, truly just kind of looking at it differently because most of our gravel roads won't meet the threshold that they did in 2001 and so. But, anyway, I think it turned out good.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I think you have stuff in there that, for people that live in dead end roads, have been a big problem. You're not going to have the daily traffic. Some of the roads that don't have the daily traffic that, if they were paved, they would have daily traffic in some subdivisions that just want to get done, when I tell them that there's no way to get done, you have the provision in there for the financial participation of the property owners. So, I think that's a big one there and it helps us spread our money out farther and so.
I think we're set good going into the next sales tax. And that was a big deal, we wanted to get this done before we get into that and that really kind of kicked off, but we really will get into that pretty heavy in early next year, so. This was a big priority of the board, public works department and Chris to get this done, so.
Yeah, I know, some people don't want to put their own money into paving their subdivision of stuff because they think it should have been done before, but, you know, buyer beware at that point, make sure your road's going to get done because we have to take over the road and maintain it for the rest of its, for the rest of it.
Forever, yeah.
So, it's not like, okay, it's paved and we're done.
The cost to pave it is, is cheap compared to the long-term cost.
Yeah.
So their upgrade is upgrading their own personal property and real estate, so.
I think it's good.
Keeps your cars from getting tore up as bad, so. I'm good with it, I appreciate you working with them on it, Chris and Eric. I know, we've talked about this for a while, so.
So, if you approve today, we will, Don Hillis is the chairperson of the board, we'll have him sign it as well. But it's ready to be approved today and we'll get it all going and we'll get him to sign it and have it dated when they approved it, which was back in November, so.
I move that we sign the revisions to the gravel road policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to save the presentation to Kristen for last. Discussion of century length maintenance agreement?
It's kind of, it's really not century length, I thought it was the phone, that day the phone, that is Huber and Associates, so, it's the agreement.
Right. So-
It's a Brian.
We'll just put that on the agenda next time.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, within my 2021 budget, I went through and there are several services that are in that budget that were tentatively approved, but actually need to be signed like this year. And I spoke to Kristen about it and, and so I think we just, I just need to get a signature saying it's okay to get started because there's preliminary work that has to be completed before the programs kick in. So like, part of the programs that, that are, that are coterminous are, like our proof point, which is our spam filtering, our archiving, our HIPAA modules and stuff like that. So, I would ask that, this has already been submitted and discussed in previous budget meetings, so I would like to get that signature if I could today on the beginning of that contract. Jill has reviewed it. So, any questions?
I don't have a problem with it, but, I mean, it's just, can we sign this prior to approving the budget?
We're just, basically it will come out of capital and that PO will convert over into next year.
Okay, that's fine.
I just don't want the services to stop.
No.
Why not?
It gets real exciting, from an IT perspective.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll get a transfer ready to.
Okay, I will sign that momentarily, I'm going to go get it.
So are we signing, is this a contract with Huber or whatever?
Yes.
You all had me bring the, you wanted me to bring the contract for the EOC upgrade and the Solocom dispatch upgrade? I have both of those.
Okay.
We need to vote on this one real quick and then-
Yeah.
We didn't.
It's fine. Go ahead, Sam, get what you need to get. Are you leaving or?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to go get your visa, I don't know, so I'm taking the motion.
Contracts with Huber?
Yes.
I move that we sign the contract for the maintenance, century length maintenance agreement with Huber and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's just, I had the two, the EOC upgrades for 200 and then, or, 204,000 and then the Solocom quote for the upgrade of the dispatching, the 911 dispatching was 63,000, 63,029. We had talked about it last week, you wanted me to bring in both of the head deal over them both, they're both good.
We already allocated money for that, right? That's the part of the case.
We had talked about it, I don't know if it was actually you guys that had it and made the decision.
So that'd be one of the things that come out of the internal stuff, too.
I believe it was internal, yes.
So, it's one of the things that we were going to do, but we didn't actually do an application, kind of like the build outs, right?
Yes.
But we didn't, we didn't allocate any money for it, but if you get an extension of time, you can do that next week.
Or we just take out our public health and safety, the part we put in there, that's kind of what-
Right.
I was saying that in the next week, we have stuff like this that we, we're talking about doing, but we didn't take it through the application process.
Well, and this one took almost a month to get the, the quote together because they went and looked at three different vendor, four different vendors, so.
Well, we're busy right now. I need a bid on this tomorrow because we have the money to spend on it.
Right.
I'm not that big, sure, I'll do it, add another zero, you know?
So, I don't know, do you all want to go ahead and approve these so I can give them to you now?
Do we need to run them through BKD to make sure all those ducks in a row, or do we approve contingent upon BKD approving qualifications or whatever?
Kind of, depends on how you want to handle it come Tuesday if you want to set open with them, because we're not really taking any more applications. It basically wants that money to put over into GR as long as we feel like it fits under the CARES program itself. It's the way I understand it. Kristen, I'll have you weigh in on that.
Is this going to come out of the part you're putting in the general fund, or is this going to come out of the part that you have not, I was, I mean, there's no question, we need to know where the funding for this particular part is coming from.
The part that was left over from the public safety? Public health and safety is what I mean.
It's still, as of now, it's still with the CARES then, or it's still in the CARES money until Tuesday, may change, may not.
So then, we're, right, we're waiting until Tuesday to figure out whether we're leaving it in there and spending it directly out of there?
That's the way I understand it.
Or if you're putting it somewhere else and spending it out of there?
Spend directly out there, seems like the easiest.
Do you have a contract?
I have, yeah.
If they sign a contract-
If we can leave it there, are we getting an extension of time yet?
If they sign a contract today, where do you want it to come out of?
I, I need to know where you're going to encumber it at.
If we encumber it out of CARES, do you feel like it has to go back to BKD for approval?
If you don't get an extension of time, you can't encumber it out of CARES.
So right now, you don't have an option, if you want to sign it today, then it will be out of the allocation that's coming over to general, so we'd have to do a transfer to sign it today. Would you agree, Kristen?
You what?
So, if you're saying the B-
I didn't hear what you said.
Okay, so BKD, since tomorrow is the deadline, so to spend it directly out of there, we'd have to wait until Tuesday before they sign that agreement. Or if they want to sign the agreement today, then it would have to come out of general fund, so kind of transfer. You agree with that?
So we can't sign it today, say contingent on BK, BKD approving it?
Kristen, you all haven't signed it today on contingent of BKD for Tuesday?
No, because I have to sign it and I have to know where you're paying for it out of there. Right now, we do not know that.
So either you wait until Tuesday before you sign that, or if you sign it today, we're going to have to transfer money and to put it into contingency, coming out of contingency into some account to do that.
But then we can transfer the money from what we put in health and-
Yes.
Okay.
How much is that besides that?
Well, not necessarily. You've taken, you've taken the maximum out you can in general funds, so it would have to come out of the amount that you took for House Department salaries already. Or if we get an extension of time, you can pay for it directly out of CARES.
Just need to wait till Tuesday.
Yeah, let's wait, we'll wait.
Still bring it back on Tuesday?
Yeah. Yeah.
So how was it in the bump house then? Because wherever we did those, those were approved and paid for and-
I think we're getting out of capital, assuming that we roll eventually.
I mean, it's one week, uh-
We could wait a week.
Okay.
I'd rather do that and not get tied up in a bunch of-
Yeah, this seems too complicated.
It does seem, it seems like it should come out of the public health and safety.
Well, I think so too, but-
So, it doesn't seem that hard.
Since Kristen has been difficult today.
If you're using it for public health and safety, it has to be used for salaries. So, you would have to either put it into the sheriff's department, the remaining amount, or something, because you've already taken the maximum out for general and you've taken an amount for EMS.
So when we said-
So you'd have to come out of the amount you've already taken for general?
So when we said for public health and safety, we said it only-
Or you'd have to give some to the sheriff out of the remaining amount.
So when we said it's going to public health and safety, we said it's only going to salaries? I thought that was anything for public health and safety. I didn't know that was just salaries.
No, you're saying that you're going to reimburse it for salaries?
I didn't hear that part. That way you understood it too? It's just for salaries?
Yeah, it's reimbursement for salaries, yep.
I thought it was for public health and safety, whatever the hell we wanted to use it for.
Well, public health and safety is law enforcement EMS and health.
Unless you get an extension on it.
What is this?
Okay.
This is public health and safety because you got the stuff for the EOC, it's exactly what it is.
You need another department, public health and safety.
Yeah, it's hurting stuff.
Do you request to put this on the agenda for next Tuesday and then we can talk about it again on next Tuesday?
Yeah, because we're going to do that kind of just CARES and then, yeah, okay. Okay.
I don't like when y'all team up against me.
Okay. 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 We are down to our final come around front.
Final meeting?
Yeah. Before we go into closed session, I think we've got everything covered, right?
See, I got my stuff done.
I missed all some more I can.
I'm going to read all this.
Read it all?
I'm going to read it all. Whereas Chris Shepherdley took his oath of office as Western District Commissioner for Cole County on January first, twenty thirteen, and whereas Chris has worked with Presiding Commissioner Sam Bushman and Eastern District Commissioner Jeff Helscher and former Presiding Commissioner Mark Ellinger, and whereas Chris was committed, oh, I didn't know that, oh, to numerous projects and improvements for the county, including the acquisition of the new Cole County Health Department building, which helped to serve many more citizens in need. He was also very instrumental in implementing the pre-trial release program, saving the county thousands of dollars. And whereas Chris and his wife Jennifer have been happily married for eighteen years and have four wonderful children, Hannah, Charlie, Ellie K. and Adam. And whereas Chris is a very active member of Trinity Lutheran Church and has served on many boards and committees, including the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, Heartland Port Authority, Salute to America Committee, Central Missouri Community Action Board of Directors and many other civic organizations. And whereas Chris is not working at the commission office, he can be found overseeing the operation of his business all seasons landscaping or coaching his children in sporting activities. Now therefore be resolved that the people of Cole County do hereby thank and commend Chris for his years of faithful service and loyalty to the county. We wish him the very best with future endeavors.
I give you the... Thank you.
Thank you. This is our bicentennial year. We have this and we have inscribed it on the back, presented to Chris Shepherdley, Western District Commissioner, for years of service to Cole County, twenty twelve, twenty twenty, it's when you won the election. So...
Thank you.
Put those on your me wall.
On my me wall?
Yeah.
I don't have a me wall.
There's a few things on your me wall, because I tell you what, you've been real instrumental with the pre-trial release program.
Yeah.
You grabbed them by the horns and ran with them and put up with Donnie a lot. I'm sure he's probably listening, so it'll be over in a minute, but, but you know, you put up with Donnie. The health insurance, getting that going, I think worked with Debbie and focused on that and that's been a great thing. Landscaping out here, we just talked about that today. I think it looks great and that's been twelve years coming, it's been over twelve years, so it took you getting in here, pushing it out, going along, so I don't know, that's, that's a few of them I can think of. I mean, you just grabbed the bull by the horns on some of it, so appreciate it. Mid-county better place over the last eight years.
Helen is sitting next to you.
You can move over there.
Well, I mean, it's, it's been a great ride and obviously, you know, life changes and things happen, but, you know, obviously it takes time away from my business and my kids and my family and stuff. And so looking forward to spending time with those kids, those kids in the high school years, I got three in high school. And so obviously, you know, just trying to do what was best for Cole County and, and, you know, do what's best for the taxpayer and, you know, just always remember that it's the taxpayer's dollar and it's not ours. And so, you know, be a good steward of those tax dollars and do, do the best you can, but, you know, for, you know, some words of wisdom, I mean, take care of our employees, you know, I mean, so, you know, that's the best asset that the county's got is their employees and you're really nothing without, without all the people doing the work. So anyway, so, you know, that's something that I've learned and I think we've got a good team here and, you know, in all departments and it's, it's been a good ride, so I'm excited.
You can take the other, like the person.
Guy that likes to eat pie. So anyway, no, I appreciate it a lot, so thank you all.
I don't know, maybe we slip another one in Thursday morning.
Did you say you have pie, is that what I heard?
I should have brought some pie.
I brought some eggnog for after hours. Closed session. That's some of Doug Thomas's, he made George Washington's recipe. Yeah, that's what this is. Oh, this is... Yeah, it's got a lot of sugar, but it, it also has rye whiskey, rum, sherry and brand. But we have to do closed session first and then we'll... Okay.
Ready to finish this?
We have a closed session.
Yep. Let's get you out of it.
All right, I move, well, I got to drink some eggnog.
I move we go into closed session for section six, ten point oh-two, one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues of thirteen.
Second.
Roll call?
Stan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
Listen to what we actually said.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was going to go with.
But you don't have to do it because it's going to be really simple, I think.
Yeah, because I can just follow off her notes when I type it up. Okay.
Okay, basically I have two sub-recipient agreements that we need you to sign that we just got in and it was on the agenda, so, but we didn't have them at the time. So they are from Saint Mary's.
From Saint...
Did you say you're back in session?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we are back in open session.
Okay. Sam already signed these?
No, I wrote his name, he's got to sign.
Oh.
He, he looks like he's writing.
So say she's got a signature down there, that's not good.
I printed his name.
Okay, you got a total here, I guess, is what this is. Yeah, so this is the amount, right?
Yes.
So I move that we sign the sub-recipient agreement with SSM Saint Mary's for a hundred and twelve thousand, eight ninety-two, eighty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I move that we sign a sub-recipient agreement with SSM Saint Mary's for a hundred and ten thousand, seven fifty and fifty-four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At all?
Yep, that's all I needed, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe that we stand in recess till four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, if you wouldn't have got it up and running, then it would have been a longer...